Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They were like.
Playing.
Hello.
They were all in the room looking at the camera, looking.
Now, I'm here working. Look, I'm sitting next to the chair.
That's right.
We're not hanging out.
Oh.
I'm just letting you know.
You made it.
Damn. That, um, something's wrong with me for letting Starbucks so much.
Mm-hmm.
I'm stuck on Rogers. I said, oh.
Oh.
I don't like either one of them.
All righty.
I'll let it Starbucks.
Okay, so, yes.
Good thing.
Jumping back into it, what we discussed earlier, basically how we got to where we are today. Today, we're going to be talking about the strategic goals, diving into some more specifics on what do the initiatives to reach goals look like? What are the KPIs that we're trying to see would show us these are successful? Who's accountable? What's the timeline these specific? So across the goals themselves, there are seven goals. Foster good governance, invest in economic development, commit to fiscal responsibility, develop community enhancement plan, plan for growth through inclusive and equitable infrastructure, achieve positive public engagement, and establish operational excellence. So across these seven goals, this is really the foundation of the strategic plan. How can we achieve all of these and what does that look like? So for the next few minutes, we're hoping to just walk through what the breakdown of each of those goals look like. So you all are familiar with them going into our conversation. And if you have any questions at any time, please feel free to ask. This is, like I mentioned, the bulk of what we'll be spending the afternoon to diving deeper into these goals. Number goal one, and he is government. So there's five subcomponents to this, and there's a different number of subcomponents, but these are all rank ordered in terms of priority, uh, from the number one to number five, but they're all indicated in last session as being items that we definitely want to include to reach this goal. Could be developing realistic achievable goals for good governance. Uh, 1.5 collaborate with other governments. So this is goal number one. And like I mentioned, if you have any questions about any of the subcomponents or why something sounds the way it does, we definitely want to address that so you understand what we're going to be talking about later. All right, so goal number two, this is invest in economic development. This was discussed at length in the last session, and I believe this is a key, a component of just strategic plans. This is definitely why one of these main seven goals. There's three subcomponents, including on creating high-paying jobs for planning growth strategic economic development projects, develop more shopping, and amend the options, and establishing a regional slash state economic development team. So that's goal number two. Invest in economic development. Goal number three is about fiscal responsibility. How do we align budgets to priorities? Are we assessing necessary resources? Balancing a budget with projects that do not affect the minimum thresholds? And developing a plan for a future penny referendum? If there are questions, I can go on. Next, I'll just give you a little time to digest these as well. But like I mentioned, these, this is really just the key components. And if you think of others as well, too, we're happy to try to include those in some that exist or even add a new subsection. Goal four, develop community enhancement plan. So this is the smallest of the goals, but is captured in these two sub-objectives. Involve citizens in a community enhancement or engagement plan, and ensure that citizens have a clear understanding of what government functions are. And that was mentioned in the last meeting as there are problems that are being brought to the county, or there are some questions that are often asked that might not fall within permi of what the county is responsible for or does. How do we make sure citizens understand that? Number five, so goal number five is plan for growth through inclusive and equitable infrastructure. There are four subcomponents to this one. I'm not moving too fast, please. I know, I know, there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of nuances between these, but establishing a plan and success, sorry, plans and success metrics that enables smart room, coordinating departments to prepare for planned growth, and then items like creating excellent amenities and providing equitable living options. And so you can notice that these all are what we're on the Jenga blocks earlier. These are all the sub-objectives and goals that we want to discuss. Yes?
How are we defined an infrastructure?
Time for an inclusive and equitable infrastructure.
There's a question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, how are we defining infrastructure?
Define what is it?
Yeah. So that's a very good question, and it's ultimately up to you all to decide what you want to capture when we say infrastructure. But the idea behind this one is what resources, capabilities, structures, all of the above, when you think of infrastructure within the lens of it being inclusive and equitable. Well, I think this one is a subjective.
How would you answer that question? What do you mean by when you say equity, excuse me, infrastructure? What does it mean to the group?
I think most of us probably.
National definition of.
Right.
Streets, water, sewer.
Correct, yes, yes. That's what comes to mind initially.
Just those building blocks, something that's sustainable now, but that you could always build on. Other foundations.
And I would have defined it inclusive in terms of everything that you just mentioned. Um, and that's why I questioned it, because immediately I thought about the infrastructure as it's usually defined with streets and sewer and all of that. But I was thinking, I was thinking totally looking at, um, government period and things that we do.
Okay, so, you know, different, and that's such a great question, because as we're hearing at the national level, there's this dialogue about what is infrastructure, talking about human infrastructure. I think here, we were mainly talking, I'm talking about back in November, the physical infrastructure of the city.
Yes.
Um, but it could include facilities, and facilities are here. It could include technology, for example, that may be infrastructure.
Man.
Depends on how you think about it.
That knows my point exactly, is that broadband is now a, a basic infrastructure.
Infrastructure, okay.
I think we need to include that, yeah.
That's a good point.
Yes.
Just a pound back.
So to that point, um, and I guess I'll connect it with what I said earlier. Whereas we, um, know what infrastructure means as we use it today, but if we are going to be expanding its definition, then I don't know if it, where we do it, maybe it's in the rebrand, but we have to also now identify and tell our citizens, this is what infrastructure means to Richland County. Anything that we are, that we've traditionally used in its state, in its current state, if we're changing what, how we're using it, I don't know where we address it, but we have to address it, because I believe that the citizens need to know that, hey, this might be what you're used to, but we're making a transition.
Um, I guess, related to Ms. Behrens, but slightly differently, however we define infrastructure, I think we should tell people what that is. But additionally, I think that there might be other areas where we want to see equity that aren't infrastructure, that we also need to make sure we find a way in this process to define. It's in our values, it's in our mission, it's in our vision. So let's be, let's be explicit about what those equitable services are, wherever they're captured, infrastructure someplace else.
Sure.
Well, no, I won't say anything, but I guess my question is, as far as, you say infrastructure, obviously, you know, we're talking about the physical, but are we also talking about infrastructure as far as our organization as well?
Mr. D.
Is that, are we trying to go there? Uh, do we want organization included in this definition? Or rebrand with respect to, uh, infrastructure?
Yes. And that is really the key of what we're trying to do this afternoon, is define what these mean for each of us, create initiatives that work within that definition. So as you all go through these goals, try to include that conversation within this goal, if you will, uh, to discuss what is infrastructure going to mean, I guess, related to that. All righty, anything else when it comes to number five, goal number five? Yes?
I was gonna say, I think, going back to November, when we talked about it, it was a lot about, like we said, planning for the future and saying, okay, as we grow, are we going to have the infrastructure that we need? So I think everything that everybody says falls under it, um, and just kind of detailing that out today is going to help us.
Yes, and so that's a really good point, because goal number two is about development, how are we addressing that development? The growth that's coming in? And goal number five is, how is it reaching everybody who is, is within the county and has access to different resources? Because I think that was a key component of the infrastructure. Some infrastructure is not the same across the county.
Correct.
So. To ensure the condition.
Condition.
Yes, making sure that we.
The needs.
That was the best plan for it, yeah.
Okay. Perfect. On to goal number six, achieve positive public engagement. So we want to champion the county wins, foster positive public relationship to tell our story, and that again is kind of the theme of this goal, telling our story, creating public information team focused on public image. How are we, how are we, um, going about idealizing that public engagement pool itself? And then celebrating excitement in the community, like the penny pot, communicating the digital, our mission, which we've already pretty much established through this strategic plan in earlier sections. Lastly, goal number seven, establish operational excellence. This one has the largest number of subcomponents, so this one might be, uh, for the, for the time a lot, it might be difficult to get to initiatives for each of these. But based off the conversation last November, each of these is important in its own right. Each of these were areas that didn't want to budge on and wanted to make sure they were included within that goal. So these include competitive salaries, uh, seven four, address employee-related matters, create reporting dashboards, seven six. A lot of that internal operational focus. Yes, Councilman Brown?
Did we, uh, mention in the last session, we talked about economic development, uh, but did we talk about workforce development? In any of those?
I don't think it's explicitly in there.
Yeah, I'm sort of missing actually workforce development. I see salaries and all, but how do we develop our workforce in the county?
Ms. Mackey?
Yes. Sorry, no, we did hit on it, I remember. It didn't come in here, but it was discussed as part of economic development plan that we already had. And so it talked about, okay, we really need to focus more on that plan, because we already have it, we just haven't been working it. But it didn't necessarily come out in this one, because it existed in the plan.
But it's not stated.
Correct, because it.
And so, and economic development.
Yes.
And the closest one is like Councilman Mackey mentioned, is creating high-paying jobs for planning growth. That's a workforce component, but you're.
But that's not, that's not.
A workforce plan. Yes, okay.
And that would lead me, I guess, to ask the question, and this would be more so a question for Director Ruble, and that is, I just wonder, can Richland, I know we're in the business of economic development, but can Richland County be in the business of workforce development? Or do we just work more closely with, say, our technical colleges and schools?
Yes, sir, I think, I think the key is coordinating all the various efforts. So for instance, Midlands Tech is a major player in this, we already fund them. So I don't think we need to recreate another entity, we just need to coordinate them to make sure they're doing it, uh, to achieve our goals.
Okay.
Okay.
I would just say something really quickly here, this is great conversation, and this is exactly what we're here to do, so.
Excuse me.
We wanted you to see these, not only just to refresh you, but to think about, are there any things missing that we, workforce, for example, that we may want to make sure get included? So when we work in your groups, that's the kind of stuff we're.
We want to hold, we want me to hold my conversation?
No, 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 not at all. I'm not trying to, I'm saying to rise and stand stuff, and this is what we're here to do.
Okay.
No, I was just saying, they can't hear us in the back.
Okay. Say it. Go ahead, Ms. McBride.
I see workforce development as so important, and as part, and I know Mr. Ruble and I talked about this a lot, um, it's a lot they're doing economic development, but we've got the companies, developers coming in, but we don't have the workforce in Richland County to employ those, make higher salaries. And currently, it is not doing, in my opinion, what we need to have done, and based on some of the latest research. So I think it is important that we, by the way, to take on that responsibility, because workforce development for the state, that's for the entire state of South Carolina, but to focus specifically on Richland County is something that is needed. And I, I think that that should be a, a high priority for the county in terms of finding workforce development and taking a leadership role, working with existing people, but it is so many companies or entities working with it. And I don't know whether they're talking to each other or not, but it has been a really, really concern. And especially as we look at some of the most vulnerable communities and their members, trying to raise them above low salaries or no salary.
Mr. Davis would like me to recognize.
Okay.
Speak of that, too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, Mr. Livingston, wanna?
I just have to, follow up on what Ms. McBride said, I think our role is going to be to do what we can do to promote workforce development. Um, you got the other entities that are responsible for doing it, we can't take on that responsibility. Both of the kinds of, we're going to have a resource team began to do that, but we do have the resources to promote it as much as we can and do the things we need to do, to work with those organizations and make sure it happens.
Rolls back to the word that Ms. Newman used earlier, promoting.
Yeah, but.
Promoting. Uh, Mr. Davis, he wanted to chime in.
Um, this is, uh, I wanted to be like in church and say amen, Ms. McBride, because workforce development is near and dear to my heart. And one of the other entities that, that we can work with, obviously, one of Jeff's former employees, Kim Manis, we've been working with her at Department of Commerce to get operators at the county. It's more about, what, what I'm talking about is more like what you're saying, our own workforce. We have to change the thought process of what we had in the past, uh, where we come to work for the county, and in order to get a raise, you had to go to a different place, or move to a different department, or, you know, you got people jumping around. That's what happens at DHEAT, and that's why we can't retain these employees, because they don't have a progressive salary. And that's something that we need to work on, and we also got to think about the value of some of these employees, like the ones that drive trucks now are the ones making the big money, because this is, you know, this supply chain issue is taking all the truck drivers away from all of us, like Mr. Maloney's group and my group, the people with a commercial driver's license, we can't get them. So those are the things that I think are, are near and dear to a lot of your department heads. When we're trying to recruit people, we need to be able to have a competitive salary to offer them.
Thank you.
No, you can, right, you can.
And if, if we look, you know, we looked at learning from our past, our history, our history is showing us that the current methods we're using is not working. So we have to look at something different to, um, help with our workforce development, because all of us, if we look at it politically, we run on a campaign that we're going to bring in more jobs, we sell economic development that, yeah, we're going to give tax breaks, because we're going to have higher paying jobs, but who's taking the jobs?
People not for me.
So I just think it's, it's essential that we look at that area.
Ms. Brown?
So I, I hear Ms. McBride's point, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on the conversation, because I heard Mr. Davis talk about, it's more so geared towards internal, be more of a retention issue. And I heard Ms. McBride talk about more in the community of Richland County having high-paying jobs, developing talent within the county, so that they can receive these high-paying jobs, which would be more workforce development than talent retention, which would be more internal focus.
Yes, sir.
Rather than external focus.
That's right, I think that in terms of the structure that we're working with right now, that internal stuff probably fits in goal seven.
Yep.
Which is operational excellence, and workforce development, which is, you know, building a skilled workforce that will attract employers belongs in the, in the economic development realm, right?
I don't think you know what's fair. Well, and, am I, so I, I, I totally agree with the first portion. But when we talk about attracting people to come to Richland County, I look forward to the day then we get, when we get this big company to come to Richland County, and Richland County gets the jobs. So, you know, I'm, I was excited, um, a couple, what, week ago, when we had our luncheon, and I met so many people who were, um, now transplants of Richland County, but I sure would have liked to have seen people who are right here from Richland County get some of those higher jobs, or to be able to be employed. We know that, you know, there was a particular, um, company that's coming in, they had a, a successful affair, and allowed several, uh, citizens will be employed. But, you know, when we talk about attracting people to come here, that's, that's one thing, and that's something that should be a focus, but we also want to provide opportunities to those people who are here, whether it is providing, um, additional training so that they do qualify for these jobs. So it, it's, it's two different things. It really is two different things, and I don't, I don't want us to lose focus on the people who live here every day.
Okay, all right. Ms. Brown, you have one final comment to offer?
Yeah, I, I agree, um, with Mr. Brown, that's one part, but in, in, in which, whatever area we put in, it's a different thing, but both of them deals with workforce development.
Okay.
All right.
All righty. So this is just, um, I guess we can go into the next section, and then I'll be able to describe this, uh, within that section. So we can start our evening, afternoon, I think evening, afternoon session for workshop. And so what we're going to be doing is some moving around, and what that looks like is this, is along the drafting initiatives for each of the goal's objectives. So what we're going to be doing is the following. Each table is going to discuss the initiatives for that, the objectives of that goal on that table. All right, so there's a goal, every table has one goal for it, the table's goal isn't going to change. The people at the table are going to change to some degree. We're going to spend 20 minutes on each goal for a total of seven rotations. And one designated staff member is going to write the initiatives on their template from each discussion. And so this is key, because this is how we're going to capture what all was discussed in each of those rotations. And there's, if you start to run out of room, or you think the conversation is a little bit too big for the amount of paper you have, you can write it on your template in the workbook, or the additional templates that are under, that are provided in the center of the pad. So let me show you to, some of the items on the table, so. This is what we mean when we say the template, the Richland County Strategic Plan Goals, Objectives, and Initiatives metric. This is the, uh, the template, we have it in each of your workbooks, it notes, but that designated individual at each table will basically write down what is discussed very briefly, a few words, a sentence, just to capture what each conversation is.
That's what the position we're trying to describe in each table.
And so if there's some confusion, I believe, Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, but every table should have someone indicated, is that, uh, that case? Okay, and so, believe they all know, they're awesome. So moving forward then, aside from that, there's also another member at each table who is decidedly the, um, subject matter contributor, so they're not going to be moving around, they're going to be staying to have that conversation. And this is just allowing all of the council members to rotate between the strategic goals themselves. So when we come up to it, after over 20 minutes, the council members will rotate counterclockwise, or based off of the goals, I think that might be, it really, if you just want to go numerical, or based off the goals on the table, and it says it on the pad. And thus, that's the, the activity. So some of the resources on the table include this department printout, so this is a big packet in the center, it's a little bit on the, uh, smaller side, but there's a ton of killer information here, this is from, was provided to Baker Tilly from each of the departments that submitted their initiatives, their KPIs for their department. So if you're on the goal, you're at this, let's say on that table, uh, goal number one, we're talking about this goal, I can use this packet to see what these seven departments that share, that filled out template, what they said, their initiatives, their, uh, KPIs. So that's why this is just a resource in the center of the table to help facilitate your conversation. And the other item is, like I mentioned, is templates, so there'll be, there should be enough room, if not, feel free to, uh, to include in your workbook, to write on the, the large notepad, and then that's the last item, is the, the large notepad, that's in the center of the table, if anybody wants to kind of leave what they discussed on that for the next group to see.
Roll out picture.
Draw, draw pictures, draw visuals, charts, anything, so, these are really the, the items. And ultimately, I know it's a lot of, a lot of information, but ultimately, the goal is the items that are vertical on this template. The initiative for each objective, the KPI, the key performance indicator.
How will we know we've accomplished it?
Yes, how will we know we've accomplished it? Accountability, assigning some form of who's an ownership of this, who's responsible for this, and then the target completion. And you can, I have, um, zero, six months, six to twelve, you can come up with any metric for the time line that you want. If it makes more sense to say FY twenty-three, FY twenty-fourth, or say ongoing, we also receive those from departments, so that's fine.
So, um, a couple more before we start this, and this, this is going to be that grown zone thing that I, that I talked about. Um, but, don't make perfect the enemy of the good as we go through this. Uh, you're probably only going to be able to get per, uh, objectives, so goal, objective, initiative, two or three ideas. That's fine, remember, there's seven groups, um, working on that, so ultimately, we'll get some duplicates, that's fine, and, but we'll get a pretty robust. But we'll get a pretty robust set of ideas. We won't leave here today with a final finished product. It'll all come back to us to kind of sift and sort and arrange it. So don't make perfect the enemy of the good. Give your best ideas. And the most important thing, and Lori, keep me honest here. What the staff is really most urgently in need of from the council is your ideas about what you specifically want to see accomplished so she can plan for that in the budget, okay? And so if I had to put these ideas of initiative, KPI, accountability, due date, that's kind of a priority order. The initiatives are the most important thing. And how will we measure it is pretty important. Ultimately, it's going to come down to Mr. Brown and his team to assign somebody to do it. In terms of due dates, what I always see happen is you overestimate your ability. And there'll be a danger of front loading too much. And the staff and us will be looking at that too. So again, I'm not trying to tell you what to say or not to say. But remember, we're talking about a five year horizon here as well. So is that clear, Smud? Yeah, questions?
For those of us who are scribes, where would you like us to capture?
On the templates.
Templates.
Yep, so you've got that that's in your book. And then we've put some additional photocopies of that for overflow.
Okay.
And so you're basically only using, you're really only using what is for that goal itself. So each template has multiple goals in it, but it just needs to use the one for that table.
Do we need to carry this?
We're talking about five here, right?
You're only doing five.
The council members are going to be.
I am counting on some other folks.
I think you should hear what extent I.
Well, I'm sitting here trying to get it.
Stay with us.
Is this the table or is this?
So whoever is at.
Leave this here?
One of you is kind of.
And I was reading. If you want to, you can keep.
As an example.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I will have what we can discuss on this table stand.
Um, Richland County is the example that he was.
There you go. That's the staff workbooks.
All by department, going down the.
Personalize.
All the different departments.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Maloney, do I need to just leave this here at the table?
And here we go, here's our. Here's our original.
Yeah, so we're going to wander around.
Objective. I'm going to let Paul come up with all the great ideas while I clear up my stuff. I was confused, I was like. Are you done with your?
They say.
Are you done with your coffee?
I think I got it.
Gotcha.
I'm good. Thank you very much.
About this, so. Well, you're saying. I do have you right here.
This makes sense.
At least there was.
The initiatives here.
Initiatives, yes. And under the goal.
Really needed.
I don't miss that. Trying to remember if you said what to write on.
My understanding is that we're going to actually, some of those blanks right there out of our.
What I have.
Yeah.
We'll all be signed out.
Since Jen and I don't rotate, we just stay here while you rotate, we can do this.
I think that Ms. Mackey and I.
Right initiative.
Right on this.
We plan to achieve.
I would say holistically.
These ideas have to be dealt by the staff.
Um, I think.
Because it's already. It's so. That's a way. I mean, it's all of it, not just. It's a true strategy.
But yeah, what are initiatives, what are things, what are programs?
Hey, you know what? Let's go for it.
We want everything.
Right, so let's see here. So.
Aren't we doing it?
What are goals?
Oh, I know you by.
So we said this.
On this council forever and a day.
It is.
They'll reach out like.
Mr. Maloney, where are the goals in here?
That or whatever.
This is under.
More likely, but like.
Issues, I guess, with the goals.
I think we've done a better job of. So what's the same. You want to find it.
Five point one.
I think we will be doing.
Whatever.
So yeah, this is all five point one and then you're looking at preferable, for instance, road.
I mean, one.
So like.
It's a.
So one is annual.
Oh, okay.
I had nothing on that.
It's almost.
You have nothing on there for transportation.
I'm sure how the.
Clerks.
Has this.
Well, let's start there, let's start there.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Number three there.
Yeah, it's like you have to restructure it all set up so you have your.
I mean, with transportation.
And.
It might continue on.
Let's see if it does.
I didn't say I wouldn't actually.
Okay.
At the position that support.
Got it.
I think.
Dylan and I must not have felt.
Something you got to do to make sure.
Actually, you got something there. I thought I was saying, dude, I thought that's how I read it.
That helps.
That's a five point two, it might have been five point one if this didn't.
And that's. You just got to have somebody that can help be, he's on the same way like department.
So this. I mean, so as a council. You guys are going to, just hide amongst yourselves.
Be departments in order to.
And put realist.
To be clear, got to have somebody.
You're right.
I must have kind of transcribed.
Yeah. I mean, as a new council.
Am I handwriting this?
Yeah. Well, I figure.
I think. I mean, the fact that it needs to take a second. Probably ought to do is make sure.
Sure.
That I'm here. I'm really having a dull one.
Issue with workforce.
Are we?
We've given.
I can't remember exactly.
Some people, I think. The idea would.
Are you going to know?
That.
I end of those. They need to.
Or tell us what you anticipate. Well, we can. Again, I was told, but all we can. And I don't have an issue with anything that's.
I came, I came late.
I think it's. It's. The spending department or road. Uh, or road.
Never mind. Well, I'll just say it, this might run contrary to this. Hold on.
Laura, I think, oh, they're bringing all these elements.
Having a strategic, and in your values.
We've done nothing with the road.
Even before this, it's something to find again.
Right, right.
I just.
So I started off.
To align.
And I think like.
I can have a.
I agree.
Kind of of having us, you know, everybody in Richland County a lottery ticket, right? Probably afford it because that's a pretty cheap catch off. How does that align? Just suppose if the priorities have been set. So even at the setting of the.
The.
I think we have to.
English is here.
Find it with our priorities. Follow and ensure. Now you've got to do it. That our goals are there. I think that's one thing that's been missing because we can have a completely realistic and achievable goal. That's not aligned. So I think that now that I'm looking at that, that's an element here that I think is.
I'm talking about getting.
Planning and zoning and.
We can.
Roads in those areas.
He's a.
They need water and sewer and I said, yes, sir.
I think too.
You go into the meeting.
And a little bit, Mr. Livingston's.
Well, invited.
And whenever you create your goals.
Right.
There does need to be a feedback process, just from our constituents, but also from staff. Because you may have a goal and we're like, this is completely realistic. And staff may say, so we have one person in that department. For example, let's take a goal that I think should be attainable and realistic. We should pick up people's yard waste. Like we told them we're going to do it. Like they're paying for it. That hadn't been attainable in my district in months.
Mission County roses.
At a court.
I don't know.
So I'm analyzing that.
Consensus and ending whatever. Uh, priority. A little more eligible.
I unfortunately, I'm not going to use consensus. I will take, I got.
Yes, they do. Want me to write, I can write now, but it's just my handwriting's loose. Not as neat.
Take under consideration, but not everybody can decide. And we're not going to have consensus.
Better.
Constituents. Just not happen.
Right.
Okay.
But really, if we did everything that some of my constituents wanted, we would kill Richland County.
And our communication.
So really the group is.
I don't know what it is.
Collaborative effort to really establish.
That's right.
The list of what is achievable.
I will, I think, I think.
And flavor because sometimes you got the issues.
And I guess I would add to that.
I just.
Something, the thing is, I guess I'm a little bit compacted. I guess we're talking organization.
Other one.
Our wide, I guess I also want to.
We were on. Is this five one or have, do we? Five, Boston?
I think we did.
And share.
Hundred of us had it.
And not that we as. First.
One is, let's see.
Two set policy. But.
That's the thing.
So I think one. Hold our, I think.
The tricks that enable smart.
Got to do the.
That's five.
That's five one.
That is.
So that was. And we have, we set the expectation, how about this from policy level, this from, we have the expectation.
So five one here.
I think we have to define, uh, before we can establish, we might need to define. I think we.
That works.
County. Well, you know, smart growth means many things to many people.
Right, so we have to just want to.
Develop a smart growth fish.
I think that blends. On the end two here. The objective two is create a shared vision with the county leaders.
Arts travel.
The thing I'm hearing is that.
It should.
Have to be collaborative and everybody has to be talking and everybody has to tie in.
That's the key. I guess, as I look at this, I'm a little bit challenged with your objective. Because the answer to a lot of them seems to be, I don't think.
Go to math.
I think I'm asking the point.
All right. So what's smart?
Establish metric.
Uh, what else?
Kind of have to.
That one.
And then Mr. Mountain. You should be. Should.
There is, are these?
Come through the. He talks.
You're. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that was in, it's definitely. So your speaker is, I imagine that's your real time.
Okay.
Yes, so you can turn the mic off and she come back to the speaker, so.
So let me just turn this up so. All right, we're good. All right, so I'll just. This.
Yeah, yeah, I can. Four. I was paying attention when you were making. I actually don't want you to get the results when you went around talking about them, so. I just want to get going with the old. If I have anything to add of it then.
And then Mr. Mountain.
You should be.
Yeah, there's a, these used to be.
Come through the.
I mean, that was in. So your speaker is. Imagine that's your real time.
Okay.
Yes, so you can do the background and she come back from the speaker, so.
Okay, so let me just turn this up so. Alright, we're good. Alright, so I'll just. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
Okay. I was paying attention when you were making.
Actually, you don't want to get the results when you went around talking about them, so. I just wait to get going with the old. If I have anything to add of it then.
Alright, thanks.